Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is now seven o'clock, the date's February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And before we start our regularly scheduled council meeting, we do have a public hearing on an ordinance that stood first reading at the previous council meeting. That's going to be ordinance eleven thirty-nine concerning amending chapter seventy, which is, uh, which deals with fees. So this is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, in sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the Havertide Grace City Charter, and to amend city code seventy, titled Fees, to update the definitions and general schedule of fees charged by the city for various permits, licenses, and other services they're under. So this is a public hearing on ordinance eleven thirty-nine. Is there anyone in the audience here this evening who has come here to speak on ordinance Good evening, welcome to the public hearing. May we please have your name and address for the record, sir?
Kirk Smith. I am a voting member of the City of Havertide Grace. I will not be releasing my address. I can write it down, though, and submit it later to Dr. Ritchie.
Good evening, Mr. Smith.
There's a, I thought the tree commission with our liaison had gotten rid of the fee for this, for the trees area. I think it's like chapter one seventy-eight or something like that. Didn't we get rid of that fee that could be imposed on people who had sidewalks or areas for trees? When I glanced over this, I noticed that the trees chapter and the fees was still in the main header. I think we got rid of that. It was a couple, three years ago, but I'm almost sure we got rid of that. So that may be a typographical error.
I recall the discussion about getting rid of the fee for trees. We're gonna have to do research on that. I can't remember. But we can, we absolutely look into it, sir.
Yeah, just maybe one line initial and go on. That's it. It's, you know, fees are fees.
I agree.
Municipality needs to collect funds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anywhere else in the audience wish to address the council this evening on ordinance eleven thirty-nine concerning amending chapter seventy, Fees? Any comments from the council? Okay, without any further comment from the audience or from the council, I now declare the public hearing on ordinance eleven thirty-nine be closed. The time is now seven oh-two, and we'll begin our regularly scheduled council meeting. Good evening, the time is seven oh-two, the date is February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. I call to order a meeting of the Havertide Grace Mayor and City Council. I will call the roll. Council President Ringsacker.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Here.
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
All council members are present and accounted for. Can everybody please join me for the pledge allegiance and the opening prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could kindly ask everybody to remain standing, as it gives me great pleasure to call Pastor Thomas Dennison of Restored Church. Good to see you, sir.
Yes, sir, it's good to be seen. Nice to be back in here, it's been a while.
Absolutely, it's a pleasure, you're welcome.
I wanted to introduce, I'm Thomas Dennison, the next gen pastor at Restored Church and retired teacher at Havertide Grace Elementary School for eighteen years. So, we have lived in Havertide Grace for ten years, and all of my kids know nothing but Havertide Grace, and we're, we're gonna keep it that way. So, thank y'all. Oh, it's been, um, I cut it off hoping the white would not be there, with the whites underneath. So, uh, but I also wanted to thank the council for letting Restored Church put on the Christmas Eve, Eve service on December twenty-third. We've had a lot of, we've had some issues in the history of our church, and we're just so thankful to be able to be back in the community again, and that was a big step for us. We're really thankful you let us do that, so thank you very much.
I heard it was a wonderful event, so.
It was, it was very enjoyable and very cold and very dark. So, so let's go ahead and let's pray. God reminded of your leadership, God reminded of your word, God reminded of your work, and help our leaders tonight, whether it's through Dr. Christie, or Dr. Chris Ritchie, planning days ahead. Thank you for our first responders. We're reminded through Joshua how when we grow weary, that you are there for us. When we plan, when we work, when things don't go our way, that you are in control. Let's not be afraid to speak your name, to serve others, to sacrifice, to carry on when others don't want to, to carry an extra load, to work harder, to work longer, all in the service of others. Help us to speak less, to listen more, and to lead in kindness and in love. Where here is your community, and I pray the love be the step that we all take. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to pray. Very thankful.
It's great to see you. Hope to see you again soon. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, we're gonna go to item five, which is the approval of the minutes. We have several minutes to approve, one from a council meeting, closed session meeting, and a public works minute. So, we're gonna go to item A, City Council Meeting Minutes of February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments?
I'll be abstaining from the vote for the minutes.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. City Council Meeting Minutes of February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four are approved, five zero and affirmative. Item B, City Council Closed Session Meeting Minutes of February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Council President?
Uh, did you want to vote on them first, or do you want me to read the closed session afterwards, after we vote on the minutes?
You vote on, whatever you want. I'll go ahead and, for posterity's sake, I will read the, uh, the votes, the material votes that we voted on in session. It says here, "Council President Moved to Accept the Appointment of Dr. C. Ritchie as Director of Administration with the Contract Term Through May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. The second was made by Councilmember Shenegas. Council approved the appointment by a vote of five to zero." Well, we have to vote on the minutes.
Right.
Yeah. So you should, I thought we were gonna vote on the minutes, and then I was read the, read the vote, but that's fine.
Make a motion to approve?
Well, I make a motion to approve the, the minutes, uh, from the closed session.
Council have a motion by Council President, have a second. Seconded by Councilmember Boger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be abstaining from that one as well.
Thank you, sir. Closed Council Session Meeting Minutes of February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, approved five zero and affirmative. Item C, Public Work Session Minutes, uh, February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have motion by Councilmember Shenegas.
I'll be abstaining, I was out that day.
Okay.
I will also abstain due to my absence.
All right.
And I will abstain due to my early departure.
Okay. So anybody that was there want to vote on this? Seconded by Councilmember Boyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. All right, motion carries, two zero and affirmative. All right, let's go on to item six, now that we got all the minutes approved. Item number six is comments from citizens. This is the part of this evening's meeting that if there's something on this evening's agenda that you wish to speak to the council about, this is the time to do so. This is also the time of the meeting, if there's any other matter or city business that you'd like to address to the council, this is the time to do so as well. So this is, this is the public speaking time. So, remember what I do? Normally what happens is if somebody goes online and fills out a form to speak, or grabs a form, or grabs a form when they come into the door, I'll call on those citizens first, but I don't have any forms. So what I'll do is I'll open up the audience at large. Anybody wish to speak to the council about an agenda, item, or other matter of city Any comments from the council? Okay, we'll go on to item seven. Item number seven is appointments, and this evening we have no appointments. Item eight is oath of office, and this evening we have an oath of office, and tonight we're gonna swear in our new director of administration. So, Dr. C. Ritchie, want to join me? Okay. Dr. Ritchie, you're about to take the oath to be the director of administration for the city of Havertide Grace. I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm gonna say the word aye, and when I say the word aye, please repeat the word aye, but also say your name. Aye.
Aye, Christopher Ritchie.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill.
That I will fulfill.
The requirement.
The requirement.
Of the office I'm about to assume.
Of the office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll be faithful.
I'll be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the laws.
Support the laws.
And constitution thereof.
And constitution thereof.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
The office of.
Of the office of.
Director of Administration.
Director of Administration.
For city Havertide Grace.
For the city of Havertide Grace.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
All right, just flip her here real quick. Sorry? Hope you people get flared.
Thank you, very much. I think you're part of where I kept those. You appreciate it. Absolutely. My family, yeah. Like, can my family join me up here? Perfect.
(inaudible) Files. some of you don't know, because our previous director of administration, Mr. Gambatoria, kind of, he didn't want a lot of fanfare, so he kind of kept his last day to himself. And, but we all knew that, I knew that I wanted Dr. Ritchie to take the role, and so Mr. Gambatoria's last day was February first or second, whatever that first Friday in February was. But our charter's a little tricky, because only director of administration can attest to laws and resolutions, and it doesn't provide anything about an acting director or anything like that. So we had to go into a closed session meeting pretty quickly last, at the last meeting, and do the vote, and I kind of did like a informal swearing in, kind of like Lyndon Johnson on Air Force One in Dallas, you know, like a quick little swearing, so he can officially attest to our laws and ordinances of the city, but I wanted to do an official swearing in for the public. So we're very happy to have Dr. Ritchie here, who, more than qualified, has helped Mr. Gambatoria and the rest of the staff a lot over the last couple of years. Originally our human resource manager when he came on board, but, but now he, while he was working for us, he earned a PhD in human resource management. I mean, that's, that's pretty, pretty impressive. So, we're very happy to have the, the team here. We, we wish Mr. Gambatoria well. I mean, he still lives in Havertide Grace, he's a, you know, he's a good friend of all of ours, and we're very proud of him. And Mr. Gambatoria had a long, long term of tenure of service to the citizens of Havertide Grace. But, so anyway, this is, this is how we, this is why we just did what we just did. So we now, Mr. Ritchie's official, and this is the team we got. So thank you, everybody. So we're gonna move on to, um, number nine, recognitions. This evening, we have no recognitions. Number ten, proclamations. This evening we have no proclamations, which leads us to item eleven, and it is the famous annual Water and Sewer Commission Report by Mr. Dan Wusenich, a member of the Water and Sewer Commission. Hello, Dan, good to see you, thanks for being here.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor. It is good to be here. This will be the first time I've actually made this presentation. So, good evening, Mayor Martin, Council President Ringsacker, and other council members. I am Dan Wusenich, I'm a citizen member of the Water and Sewer Commission. I'm here tonight to make the annual presentation pursuant to the requirements under city code As you can see from the financials, we'll start out by reporting on the summary of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. The available funds from all the revenue sources in two thousand and twenty-three was eight point four million. Capital uses totaled nine point five million. Of that, two point eight million was used to service the debt, six point eight million was used to implement the large capital projects. And then finally, the end of the year balance for Fund Nine was one point two million dollars. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three was not that bad. A significant, a significant source of revenue that, that we focus on heavily is the capital cost recovery fee, CCRF. CCRF essentially is the, the fee that is charged for new connections for houses and businesses, industry. Effectively, that fee is used to service our debt. So this evening I'll be mentioning the CCRF several times throughout the presentation, just to demonstrate how important it is and how focused we have to be on that. In fiscal year twenty-three, we averaged one hundred and three connections. That was one oh-seven water connections and ninety-nine sewer. That was eighteen water connections over the budget, and ten sewer connections over budget. So that is a good thing. That translated to a fee collection of one point nine million dollars. Revenue for Fund Nine comes from generally three places. First, the connection fees, the CCRF. Second, the water and sewer rates that we all pay for our, our water, and then ultimately sewer use. And then finally, other fees, which include the important fee of the infrastructure replacement fee, or IRF. It's important to state here that the first two, A and B, connection fee and then the water and sewer rates, they're used predominantly, or the intent is, that they would pay for debt service and the large projects in the capital improvement program. It should be noted, on the last slide, we had an average of one oh-three. In order to pay our debt service right now, we would require to have one hundred and fifty new connections. So you can see, while all the numbers looked good on the last chart, there is a, a fundamental deficit in the program, and I'll, we'll talk about that also later, how important that is to pay attention to that. The summary for fiscal year twenty-three, as far as the activities that have, that went on, the, first off, the commission would like to recognize you, Mr. Mayor, and the full council for your engagement and recognition of the issues that Fund Nine confronts. You were very diligent and dug us out of a deficit many years ago, and we have been solvent ever since. Not only that, but you- Not only that, but you worked very hard at being aware of the issues and also the necessity for raising rates when necessary. So, I want to thank you for that. Also, the public outreach programs that you have been involved in in the past in making sure that the customers and citizens understand what's going on with Water and Sewer, Fund IX, and the infrastructure that's out there. We appreciate your focus on economic development, or the economic development that ultimately trickles down to connections, the CCRF, and then also selling water, so the water rates in sewer. So, that's a, increases and enhances the revenue coming to Fund IX. The other focus, you focus, the city focuses heavily on housing inventory, the new starts, which would be connections going back to the CCRF. So, you're beginning to see how important CCRF is. And then also, your support of an ongoing capital improvement program. We really appreciate that. The infrastructure, as we keep saying over and over again, is in not-good shape. But over the past several years now, a large effort has gone toward that. You have sponsored that, you have supported that, and you have continued to support it. I was here at the public meeting the other night, and I appreciated all the words that I heard from Mr. Mayor you and the council members here. So, you do get it, and we appreciate that. And finally, in 2023, there was that push to see if we could sell water to Harford County. And I know that just wasn't a one-time deal. I'm always hearing discussion and conversation about additional water sales to Harford County, and that is important for revenue generation. Fiscal year 2024, to date, again, the issues essentially are the same. So, the Commission wishes to thank you for focusing on the same issues yet again in another The issue that's beginning to come to the fore now in '23 and '24, and then ultimately '25, is the understanding of the importance of the CIP and funding the CIP. And we'll be talking about that a little later. An example of the importance of the funding is your initial support for the 2020 referendum for the $15 million bond. That was very successful due to all your hard work. To date, the city has deployed $9.7 million of that to the large projects, and significant improvements are being made. So, there is success. Then the other part the Commission wishes to recognize is all your efforts that you've had in successfully attaining Aberdeen, the City of Aberdeen, as a customer of water. That is a significant financial contribution to the revenue of Fund IX. Challenges for the upcoming year, fiscal year 2025. All the same challenges that we just talked about, and I know you're thoroughly engaged with them and will continue to be engaged, and we appreciate that. We'll all be focused again on, we'll focus on the CCR, the connection fees. Depending on how the economy goes, right now, it looks optimistic for the coming year, but we have to keep our eye on the ball. If the economy takes a sudden turn down and housing starts do not happen, those revenues will not be forthcoming. The significant challenge that we'd like to talk about tonight, or punctuate tonight, is the implementation of a properly-sized CIP, capital improvement program. Right now, I know the Director of Department of Public Works is very focused on the next large series of projects that will consume a significant amount of capital dollars, and that's the Woodermane and all the associated sub-projects going up Route 151. The Commission is anxious to hear the financing plan for that. We know that's going to be a big push-up. Debt is right now a primary source for doing these big projects, and there is only just over $5 million of debt capacity left on the bond from 2020. So, the Commission wishes to emphasize the focus on rate increases to help out, and also, as debt capacity becomes limited in the couple of years in the future before we retire debt and then go back with additional debt, it's important for the city, mayor, council to be focused on the state as potential source for grants to help fund these projects. Recommendations for fiscal year 25. First recommendation is keep doing what you have been doing, is what that first recommendation boils down to. The big part there is the support of the critical repairs and improvements to the infrastructure. Second recommendation is debt service. Theoretically, the debt is to be serviced from the CCRF. As I mentioned before, the CCRF is driven by the economy, and historically, it hasn't really met the needs of covering debt service. The example right now, as I brought up earlier, for 2025, we will need theoretical 150 hookups in order to meet our debt obligations. History tells us that's probably not going to happen. It might. It might be a really good year, but we've been lucky in the past, but we need to keep an eye on that. So, the root of this recommendation is for you to continue to budget realistic numbers based on your best estimate of home starts. That keeps us focused on what the true gap is between the budget, the 150. And then past year, the reason why we make this recommendation, in those past years, prior to, I think, everybody on the dais here, they just assumed 150. And that's one way we got the deficit that we had several, several years ago. Recommendation number three. The recommendation is to increase the infrastructure replacement fee, the IRF, by 8%. The rationale behind that is, as you probably know, several of the large improvement projects over the past two, three years have seen significant escalation in costs. They were estimated at one cost, and when the job went to be executed, they were nominally 50% higher than the original estimated cost. Recently, E.J. shared one job that was 70% over the original cost. Now, we all believe that that is not, they are not sticky escalation numbers, that prices will come down and they'll become more rational. However, they're not going to come down to where they were before. Hence, the recommendation for an increase of 8% in preparation for as they come down. They're not going to come down all the way, and that will help pay for the capital projects. Recommendation number four, continue to update the capital improvement program annually. And in support of that, aggressively go after, seek grants from the state and to work with our state delegation to get a process in place to be able to have more grants for infrastructure improvement. Recommendation number five is to reassess the ordinance that established, or established the Water and Sewer Commission. We're recommending that you focus on, one, the leadership structure of the Commission, and then, secondly, the duties of the Commission. Then our final recommendation is, we believe that legislation is required in order to implement an automatic increase in water and sewer rates each year by the inflation rate that Fund IX experiences. Now, what does that mean? Does that mean increase every year by the CIP, the Cost of Living, Consumer Price Index? No. It's the actual cost, inflation costs, that were experienced by making water sewer, making water and maintaining the sewer system. The two primary examples of that, number one, would be chemicals. Chemical prices are lumpy. Some years, chemical prices are the same, others, they go up just a little bit, and then all of a sudden, you see a big increase. And those prices are usually sticky. When they happen, they happen. And that's a cost that Fund IX has to pay. You just can't say, "Well, we'll let it go for a year." So, the money has to come from somewhere. So, what we are recommending, that there is an automatic increase to water and sewer rates to cover those costs that actually do increase and are going to persist over time. Another example of that would be the cost of employees, benefits, salaries. Sometimes, benefits can be lumpy, depending on what's going on in the insurance industry, and salaries, there's periodic increases in salaries, and that should be recognized in the water and sewer rate in an automatic fashion. The driver behind asking for a automatic increase is to recognize that if in some year, an increase is not done, let's say it's a 1% increase, and that increase is not seen, we have to live with that effect in a compounding fashion as we go forward. Now, ultimately, you may increase rates by 10% and say, "Okay, we've compensated for it now," but we're carrying with it that duration of time where we did not have the money, and we, essentially, you defer work. And that's how we got the system to the place where it is today, the infrastructure where it is today, where it's breaking down and in bad shape because we were deferring work. So, that was a lot. I hope that was clear, and that is our last recommendation. Any questions or comments?
Council, any questions? Councilman Robertson?
Not really a question, just more of a comment. I really do appreciate you, Dan, all of your years of hard work on that commission. I have full faith in you and the folks that have joined you and served on that commission. There've been some past council members and currently a member in the audience now, Fred, new one. So, I think folks, maybe that aren't familiar, there's like, there's a great brain trust there of people that have been in the industry for a long period of time and are valuable in giving their insights for how water systems work in general, how big projects are typically handled, and then, of course, the financial aspect. So, I really appreciate your time, your volunteer time, and your knowledge for the city.
Thank you, Jason.
Is that it? Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just want to echo what Councilman Robertson said, Dan. I know you guys put a lot of work into this. I know that there's a lot of bold recommendations in this report, especially how we operate and how we, you know, establish our rates and things like that. So, you've given us a lot of stuff to discuss internally and with council when we start discussing the budget in the next couple of months. So, you know, we've come a long way in Fund IX, and, you know, but we have, you know, there's always going to be issues. I mean, it's like, you know, in 2015, when this administration took over, we just said to ourselves, you know, "We're going to make, you know, some tough decisions and just bite the bullet and get it done." And then, you know, it's one step forward and two steps back sometimes, you know? And, you know, like I said, we've come a long way. We've done a lot over the last nine years. This administration, council, has been very lucky to work with you and Fred and the folks on the Water and Sewer Commission. I know that, you know, some good news, that, you know, light the end of tunnel is our debt service for the wastewater treatment plant will be done in a few years, so we can ship that $2 million to some other things. But, you know, just one of those things, you know, when you have a historic city, you've got a historic water system, you know? And, you know, I think what I want to tell my citizens is that we're always going to be dealing with this. I mean, it's like, I used to think we could just solve it, you know? But the biggest thing we have to do is just trying to find a sustainable way forward that, you know, isn't reckless, it's, you know, reasonable, especially for, you know, the citizens in our city, you know? So, again, I appreciate this report, I really do. Says a lot of things there that need to be said. So, Dan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to comment? Johnny?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And we did have a great team. I appreciate a council member stating in that. Dan, you have extensive background in the, from the corporate arena, so you bring that wealth of knowledge. Mr. Freddie Willis brings another wealth of knowledge, also Director of Finance. Mr. George Hordy and Abdul were up there with us, kind of banging with you. But I got a couple of questions. It's my commission, so I'm not going to be too harsh. So, I see that there is an 8% IRF for FY '25 when there was only just a 3% over the last year.
Right. And that is to help alleviate that, those significant escalations that we're seeing. No way does it close the gap. So, right now, the only solution is you have to decrease the scope or find funding someplace else. But as we talked through, what do we do? Do we just say, "Don't raise it, and let's just get on with life?" We felt that a prudent number would be 8%, because in talking through this, we were all relatively confident that as those escalators roll off and come back, they're not going to come down to the prices that we were seeing originally two years ago, when you were getting the estimates for those jobs. Some of this escalation will be sticky. So, it's, we're incurring those costs now, they're real, and we believe that we will be incurring at least 8% escalation ongoing.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate it. And just one more. So, just for the listening audience, the citizens at home, all of us up here, just, so why is it so important to increase the water and sewer rate every year by inflation?
Yeah, that's, we see that as it's a real-life cost that is incurred by Fund IX. And if we don't compensate for that on a regular basis, it, those real costs begin to stack up and compound year over year. We all know the example where in your 401K or IRA, you love compound interest. That's where you make money. Well, there's the reverse of that. If you have a deficit and you carry that deficit over several years, you compound that deficit. So, it's every year, year over year, that you do not raise, that's less and less work because you don't have the funds to do that work. So, that's the fundamental rationale behind that.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome, Councilman.
Dan, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to move on to the agenda. Item number 12 is resolutions. This evening, we have one resolution. It's a charter resolution. And we're going to hand it off to the Council President.
Mr. Mayor, council, citizens all, scouts in the audience, I move to introduce Charter Resolution concerning amending Section 18(c) for non-elected acting officials for first reading.
Counsel, I have a motion by the Council President and seconded by Councilman Robertson. This is a motion to introduce a charter resolution. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce a charter resolution carries six or an affirmative. Counsel, this is going to be known as Charter Resolution 300, Charter Resolution 300. A resolution by the mayor and city council of Havertie Grace, Maryland pursuant to the local government article of the annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the city charter to amend city charter Sections 18(c), generally pertaining to certain non-elected acting officials, establishing duties and requirements for certain non-elected acting officials. Counsel, I have a motion to adopt Charter Resolution 300.
So, moved. Second.
Motion by Councilman Robertson and seconded by the Council President. Question or comments on the charter resolution? Council President.
So, I'm actually just going to read the first new line from the charter here. It says, "In the event..." It says, "In the event, and appointed position listed under this subsection becomes vacant for any reason, the mayor shall designate an acting director or other acting officer until such time as a director or other officer can be appointed." So this just helps us infill, you know, for any interim time where we have a director retire or leave and until we hire a new director, allows the mayor to appoint new officials for the city. So we're not lacking leadership here at City Hall.
Sure. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Okay, Council, this is going to be a roll call vote on this charter resolution. Councilmember Boger.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
By a roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative, City of Haverty Grace Charter Resolution Number 300 is adopted and approved. And Council President, we're going to need a public hearing on this charter resolution. How does?
March 4th?
We actually have to advertise a little bit longer, I think, the 18th, March 18th. So mark it on your Google calendars and set your alarm. Thank you. Very good. Item number 13, ordinances. This evening, we have one ordinance, and that deals with tax credits for first responders, and we're going to hand this off to the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Boyer.
Mayor, I move to introduce an ordinance concerning amending Chapter 177, Article 5, tax credit for qualifying first responders.
Second.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Boyer and seconded by the Council President. This is a motion to introduce an ordinance on first reading. Do I have any questions or comments on the introduction of this ordinance? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce an ordinance concerning tax credits for qualifying first responders carries six zero and affirmative. Council, this will be known as Ordinance 1140, 1140. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Haverty Grace, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11e of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated Code of Maryland, Sections 33 and 34 of the Haverty Grace City Charter, for the purpose of amending City Code, Chapter 177, Article 5, taxation. Council, do I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 1140 on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer?
Just want to take this opportunity to clarify for everyone what the purpose of this legislation is for. We received a request from, I believe, the hose company, asking for a change from 25 rides to 24 rides, and that's simply to make the math easier. It's based off of a 12-month period of time, 2 times 12 is 24, and that's what they're asking for. Makes common sense. The second request is for clarification, and I believe that came from our finance division, for just clarifying that, the total amount per year that can be earned by a household. If anybody has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Any council, any further questions or comments? Thank you. Okay. Council, we're going to do a roll call vote on Ordinance 1140 on first reading. Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Councilmember Boger.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
By six to zero vote in favor of, City Council Ordinance 1140 is adopted on first reading. Council President, March 4th, sound good for a public hearing?
Sounds perfect.
Okay. The public hearing on Ordinance 1140 will be at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on March 4th at 7:00, preceding the next council meeting. Thank you very much, Council. And Item 14 is old business. This evening, we have new old business. Item 15, we have new business. Item A, Council President.
So, Mr. Mayor, so I've been working on something, citizens, oh, thank you, I've been working on something with Mr. Adam Rebchinsky, the senior aide of the mayor, try to streamline some of the stuff we do. There's been no significant changes to the council procedures in over 20 years, and I think we can clean up a couple of things. For non-legislative matters, we're reviewing, Robertson was of order, this procedure called a consent calendar that allows us to block things together. So for instance, if this passes, I'm going to make a motion. It, I don't think technically needs a motion, but we're going to make a motion so everybody gets on board. But for all the events afterwards, we have seven events, okay? We could sit here for 20 minutes and, or even 30 minutes, just listen to every single one of them, and then a vote, and then talk, and then vote, and then talk, and then vote, and then talk, or under Robertson's order, we're allowed to take everything, these non-legislative matters, only non-legislative matters, and group them together. And so, for instance, Dr. Ritchie would read, number one, we have the annual Easter egg hunt on March 30th, and then get the date and the sponsor, and then he'd say, "First Fridays, May 3rd, June 7th, blah, blah, downtown, get the sponsor." Defender's Day, and he would list all the events, and instead of spending time lamenting on every single one of them, we block them together and vote as a whole. Now, every council member here has the prerogative, if there's some issue here that they'd like to discuss, they can by all means make a motion to remove that from, or even just request it to be removed from the consent calendar, and we'll vote for everything else, and then we'll discuss that one individual thing. But I think that just streamlines everything. We've had some meetings recently going until 11:55 at night, just trying to make things a little bit easier for viewing, getting nods from the audience, for our viewers at home, and everybody here who works a real job. And I'm just trying to make things easier for the citizens and for legislators as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to change the council procedures to utilize a consent calendar for non-legislative matters under the rules of Robertson's order.
Second.
Council, I have a motion by the Council President and seconded by Councilmember Boyer. This is a request to utilize the consent calendar for non-legislative matters by rule of Robertson's order. Questions or comments? Councilmember Robertson?
Yeah, I commend this move. I think it's important to note, too, that, like, this evening, for instance, all of these are events that happen annually, First Fridays, the egg hunt, the Halloween costume. So they're not controversial things. It's just, as Council President said, it's a matter of the time that it takes to read through them all and discuss them and all that good stuff. One question that I have is with the consent calendar, will those events still be listed, like, on the agenda?
Yes, absolutely. Everything will be listed. We just won't spend time poring over every minute detail, but they will be available to the public and to the council members as a whole in the agenda packet.
Roger that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer?
Just a clerical question. At what point would it be appropriate for us to ask for it to be pulled? Would it be prior to the meeting to ask for it to be pulled from the consent calendar?
Like a specific event?
Yeah, or during the meeting, or both.
I would imagine you could do that right.
Anytime.
When you bring it up under that item, say, "Before we approve the consent, can we pull this one event"? I mean.
Okay.
Would it be, is there a time for question under the, you know, consent vote? Yeah, so that would be the appropriate time, probably.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Oh, wait, I'm confused. So therefore, when we're going through the special events, like, during that is when we'd ask for it to be pulled?
I think that.
And then we would be discussing it after the consent calendar?
I think that at any time, if you recall me the day before and say you want it removed, we'd remove it. If, once we start reading it, if you want to pause and say, "Kate, can we remove this to vote on separately?", I think that it'd still be appropriate, and we could do it that way.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to have very few of these issues as a whole. I mean, I can't remember, I remember one or two issues over the past four years I've been up here. So, six years I've been up here. So, yeah, I think that we can, you know, just out of courtesy, anytime that you object.
I'm just saying that as Chair, like, you know, even as Dr. Ritchie's reading them, if there's some question, let's say it's a new event, I mean, I'll just say, you know, "Mr. Mayor, can we respectfully request to pull this one from the consent"? It could be done just like that. And then we just take that out, vote on the other ones, and then vote on that separately. I mean, that's how I envision it happening, everybody else sees that, too, so.
I'm good with that, thank you.
All right, so I have a motion by the Council President and seconded by Councilmember Boyer. Any further questions on this process? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to use the consent calendar agenda, or, I'm sorry, motion to use the consent calendar for non-legislative matters is approved by this council, six zero and affirmative. So that takes us to Item B, and Dr. Ritchie, you want to go over all the events?
Yes, I would, and thank you, this will be brief. So for your consideration, Mayor and Council, we have seven events. First, we have the annual Easter egg hunt on March 30th. It is sponsored by the Haverty Grace Recreation Committee. It is at 12:00 PM and ends at 12:05 at Concord Point Park. First Fridays, those run the first Fridays of every month, and they are sponsored by the City of Haverty Grace. There is a new footprint for those, considering the downtown revitalization project, a restoration project in your packet. Defender's Day, May 4th, sponsored by the City of Haverty Grace and the Celebrate the Fourth Foundation, and that runs from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Concord Point Park. Garden Mart, May 18th through 19th, the sponsoring organization is the Haverty Grace Maritime Museum. It runs from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM each day, and it is at the Maritime Museum and the Lighthouse Keeper's Lawn. The Senator Bob Hooper House Regatta on June 14th, it is sponsored by the Upper Chesapeake Health Foundation, and there are members of that group here present in the audience this evening, if anybody has questions. That is running from 5:30 PM to 10:00 PM at Concord Point Park. Haverty Grace Oktoberfest, October 12th, sponsored by the City of Haverty Grace and the Haverty Grace Masonic Lodge, Number 130. That will run from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Concord Point. And the annual Halloween Costume Contest on October 30th, that is sponsored by the Haverty Grace Recreation Committee, and it will run from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Washington Street between Congress and Pennington. And that is your slate of events.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie. Council, I have a motion to approve the special events.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Boger. Questions or comments?
Yes.
I'm sorry, my voice is going in and out today. I have a question in regards to the regatta and the snow fencing and access to the lighthouse, just confirming that there will be, I'm assuming that's what this line is here, that there's easy access to the lighthouse, and that the lighthouse will be open, available to be And snow fencing won't restrict it?
I'm not entirely sure how that's been set up in the past, but since we have the event sponsors here, would you care to answer the question?
That is your answer.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
Call for the move. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The events listed are approved six zero and affirmative. Thank you. Item 16, Director's Reports. Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first off, I'd like to remind the public that there is an election coming up for the mayor and three city council members. The election itself will be held on May 7th at the Star Center. Polls open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. Filing for candidacy opens March 5th at 8:00 AM, and filing closes March 19th at 5:00 PM. The filing fee for mayor is $100. The filing fee for city council is $50, and all of the necessary information is currently posted on the city's website, so please go there and you can download all the packets for it. Couple updates on some events that are coming up next week. The Linda Ronstadt Experience at the Star Center on March 1st. It is starring American Idol finalist Tristan McIntosh. On March 2nd is the Winter Farmers Market on Congress Avenue in front of the Star Center. My predecessor, Mr. Gamatoria, he worked with Katie Noe and the Haverty Grace Arts Collective in just making the public aware of the different events that they are doing, and some updates from them, so I intend to continue that. So here are their updates. So the Haverty Grace Arts Collective had a phenomenal masquerade fundraiser and gala on the 10th. This was the first time in several years that they had partnered with several local restaurants to provide the food. It was enthusiastically received by all guests. They also had a record-setting silent auction, and the masquerade returns on March 1st of 2025, so mark your calendars. They also hosted a new event celebrating black male poets in honor of Black History Month on the 17th at the State Theater. The event was a great success and serves as a tee-up for their next on-stage event, Women's Voices in American Poetry, an observation of Women's History Month. The large sculpture Samara commissioned for the lockhouse is on schedule for installation in late spring this year, and an unveiling soon thereafter. And the Arts Collective is also continuing with the call for art for the arts sculpture planned for outside of the Opera House. And then, some notes for me personally, I would like to thank my colleague here, Adam Rebchinsky, for going down to Annapolis on behalf of the city. He was there all day today and still managed to make it back for the council meeting, so thank you, sir. I would like to thank my colleagues across the dais, but also ones at home, for just your support and assistance as I've been transitioning into my new role and still having responsibilities of my former role. And then lastly, Mayor, Council President, and council members, I thank you greatly for this opportunity, and I look forward very much for working with you in this capacity. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Very much wanted to reach you. We're going to go to Ms. Bridget Johnson, Director of.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens at home. Couple of quick updates. There are some upcoming ribbon cuttings that I'd like to share. The Think Big Network ribbon cutting is going to be on March 7th at 5:00 PM. Think Big is located at 931B Pulaski Highway. Everyone should have received an invitation this morning. If you did not, please check your inbox. And again, if you didn't, I'll take care of that, but that ribbon cutting, again, is March 7th at 5:00 PM. Think Big Network. Everyone, or who doesn't know about Think Big, they are currently installing state-of-the-art fiber optics in Harford County, including the City of Haverty Grace. Angels of Mine Child Care Facility has opened at 349 Fountain Street. A ribbon cutting is being planned, we're working with the Chamber of Commerce, details forthcoming. Excited about this location. If you know where 349 Fountain Street is, it once was a Head Start daycare facility. It's been closed for years. To have another childcare facility locate in that location is good for us because it's one of the things that we always hear about Haverty Grace, is that we lack childcare options. So as we work with this new business and getting a ribbon cutting and getting additional information, I will share that with everyone. Harbor Freight is opening. I'm excited, I hope everyone else is excited, on Route 40 in the Plaza. in the plaza where the CVS's used to be a Save-A-Lot, and if you're from Haverty Grace or been here long enough, it used to be an Acme grocery store. We are moving along, we're not holding them up at all in the City of Haverty Grace, we are just waiting for them to pull a couple of more permits, and they will be off to the races. So we'll keep you up to date when they open, as well as a ribbon cutting, and congratulations to the city, we can buy our tools locally. We are asking, this is a grant request, to the Chesapeake Bay Trust for $174,000 to purchase six tree box filter systems to install along North Washington Street. This is part of the downtown restoration project with us trying to come up with different grant opportunities to offset some of the cost of construction. So these tree filter boxes have been blessed by Patrick Seipolt. We will have native trees and plants, and they will help create a tree canopy for Washington Street. So that request has been submitted. We're also asking for MEA funds, Maryland Energy Assistant Funds, to replace the outdoor lights around Concord Point Lighthouse and on each end of the promenade for year three of our Smart Energy Grant. The other two years, of course, have been installing lighting inside of City Hall, DPW, the police station, the community center, and I'm sure I forgot a couple other city buildings. The Economic Development Advisory Board will meet tomorrow here at 4 o'clock PM. Everyone is invited, including you scouts. The Visitor Center will officially open at our temporary location on Thursday, February 29th, 203 North Washington Street, the old Amanda's Florist, and we expect construction to begin at our current location, 450 Pennington Avenue, around mid-March. And along with that, thank you for approving the first Friday's application tonight, so those applications will be available on the website in the morning, and they are always available at the Visitor Center. Congratulations to my colleague, Dr. Chris Ritchie, and I'm very happy for you and proud to have you in this position, look forward to working with you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Council, any question for Ms. Johnson, Economic Development? Thank you very much. Good evening, Mrs. DeHordy, Director of Finance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, citizens, both here and at home. The, the current financial condition of the city is as follows. The general fund, since my last report, we've received about $215,000 plus in revenues, and we have spent just under, just over $840,000. So the, the fund has declined by $620,000, but we're still sitting at 5.675 million. So this is normal activity, as you know, it's front-loaded on the revenues and the expenses are more evenly spaced throughout the year. So none of those are out of line. The Water and Sewer Fund, since my last report, we had just under $250,000 in additional revenues, and we spent a little over $320,000. So the fund has declined 70,000 to 4.7, just over 4.7 million dollars. So again, this is normal mid-year activity as the funds use up the, the revenues. And then the Marina Fund, we have received a whopping $4,500 since my last report, but we've only spent $13,500. So the fund's declined a little, about $9,000, but it's still sitting at over $870,000 for the year. So all the funds are, are moving, you will see the, the fund balances decline pretty steadily from here on out because most of the revenue generation has been done. The Water Sewer Fund's a little more even, but the other two funds are very much past their heavy revenue days. But all are going very well, very smoothly, and right in line with where we expected them to be this time of year. And that's my report for this evening, sir.
Thank you very much, George. Council, any questions for Mr. DeHordy? Okay, thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Melizer, Director of DPW.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Councilmembers, citizens. First, I'd like to say happy belated President's Day. Again, echo sentiments to other directors, congratulations, Dr. Ritchie, it's been great working with you so far. I know you'll do great in your new role. Third, I just want to thank Mr. Dan Warsage, he did a great presentation on the Water Sewer Commission, so shout out to Dan, great job. Fourth, I'd like to thank the council members and scouts from Troop 965 and the scout parents. I appreciate you joining us last Sunday for a tour of the wastewater treatment plant. It was led by Mr. Steve Carlton, I think he did a really good job, and he volunteered to come in on his day off, unpaid for his time, so teach us a little bit about the science of wastewater. I thought everybody had a really good time, and the scouts got to interact with some of the stations he had. So I do think Steve did a really good job, and I just appreciate you guys coming out to learn more about that, so thank you for that.
EJ?
Yes, sir.
That was Troop 967.
967, I apologize.
This is 965.
965. Correction, for the record. Fourth, we did have some communications that went out to residents, we posted on our city website as well, as along with the mailers, about the third quarter sample violation, and we want to reassure our residents, the mayor, the council, that our water is safe, continues to be safe. We have demonstrated that through recent reports through the Maryland Department of Environment. We've taken four corrective steps, one, adjusting activated carbon, two, increasing our sampling frequency, three, just getting an extra set of eyes on reports. And with that, we are meeting compliance, as mentioned, all state and federal regulations. So last but not least, we did want to follow up with our citizens through the CCR, that's our Consumer Confidence Report that goes out, and you will be hearing from us in July with that report. So I'll have to report, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Melizer. And any questions for EJ? Thank you. All right, good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm not really sure what's going on, but for the last month or so, I've had a lot of packages and Uber Eats and that kind of stuff dropped off at my house. So I got to thinking about it, so I went outside and I wanted to make sure that my house number was visible and that it was still hanging there, and it was. So then I got to thinking about it even further, and I just want to really remind people that I'm not sure if, whether or not, you know, Amazon or UPS or Uber Eats just doesn't know how to figure out house numbers when they're delivering. But just as a reminder overall, you do have to have your house number posted visibly for us to see you. When I say us, I mean especially for first responders, it is a law. So we want to make sure that, that your numbers are big enough that we can see it, that you don't have anything overgrowing or blocking the numbers so that we can get to you if we have to very, very quickly. And one of the best ways to do that is just go outside and stand on the roadway and see, you know, whether or not you can see your numbers. If you can, that's great, that's what we want. So just please keep that in mind, and I'd suggest that you do that as soon as you possibly can. The other thing I want to do is I want to congratulate the city on the Mardi Gras Parade, it was very, very nice. I know the weather was kind of maybe a little bit iffy, but you all seemed to have had a good time, you know, throwing beads. I know, I know President Ringsacker got me a couple of times with the beads, so that's okay. But it was good. The only other thing I just want to remind folks is during any of the parades, please, I know we have a tendency, or people on the floats want to throw things out to the kids and that type of thing, but don't have your kids run in the middle of the street to try to pick up the beads and the candy and all those other kinds of things, because it can be very dangerous if they do that. I also want to just give a brief update, we have three recruits that are currently in the Police Academy. They started in January, they don't get out till almost September, but that's okay, at least we have three people, which is really good. That doesn't mean that people should still not apply to be a police officer. So the members of Troop 967, you're young, but I'm still going to try to recruit you.
965.
I had 965 written down, so, but nonetheless, I'm still going to try to recruit you. So behave and come and take a tour of the police station, it's not as fancy as the water treatment plant. We're not, we don't do anything with sewage or anything like that, but we do have jail cells, and we've got cars, and we've got sirens, so come on over and we'll give you a tour of our, of our department, so that would be it, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Chief, appreciate the comments. Any comments, any questions for the Chief?
Chief, thank you so much for earlier coming out and talking to the boys, because one of the, one of the boys is working on, they're all here for a merit badge, but one of them's working on another one, and they had a question about the police officers and their interaction with the public, and I told them about how the poor police officers are usually subject to idiot politicians like us that, that try to think, not like us, but like you, you understand, like the, like down in the State House where they make unfunded mandates, like the issue we had before with body cameras. I personally think body cameras are a great idea, but the state needs to pay for it if they're going to mandate that we have it. SROs, the issues we had there about, the police officers are just doing their jobs, and they're, they're stuck with, with people down in Annapolis that really tie your hands a lot of time, and I thank you so much for explaining that to the boys and talking to them tonight.
Yeah, that, that's not a problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Good, thank you, Chief. We're gonna go to item 17, business from the mayor's office. My directors this evening did a wonderful job updating everybody, so I have no comments this evening, so we'll go straight to business from the council. And welcome back, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to be back. I had a temporary duty with the Army Reserves in Salina, Kansas, and I don't recommend that place to anybody, but, um, sorry. I appreciate everybody holding down the fort and all that good stuff, and ready to get back and swing at things, so that's it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Good evening, Councilmember Booger.
Good evening, Mayor, citizens who are still with us, and those of you who had joined on, online. The first thing I want to talk about is the Water Sewer Presentation. I think the guys did a phenomenal job. If, if any citizen out there has a question in regards to, to Water Sewer, just please reach out to me. A lot of folks really don't know that we have, that there's a flat fee, that, I mean, for the average citizen homeowner that has a 5/8 inch, a 5/8 line or a 1/8 line, you're gonna pay 91 bucks a quarter, right? Which, which, I mean, you do the math, that's 364 bucks a year, so that, that, that's a flat fee, right? And that includes infrastructure, big restoration, that includes your garbage, and then, of course, you have the, the variable, right? So you really got to focus on, when we talk about the, I asked a question earlier about the rate, about the 8% IRF, you know, this year over last year, you kind of got to look at what the, what the real water rate actually looks like, right? So if you, if you do the math right now, for, for now, you're looking at $6.80 for 1,000 gallons of water. So my mathematicians out there realize that for one gallon of water is .0068 cents, right? I mean, get the north south, I mean, I pay more for, for this than I do at my tap, right? And actually, my tap water sometimes is better than this, is that right, EJ? Of course, EJ agrees with me, right? So, and I do sit down with citizens and I, and I do the math for them, and some of them do some recalculations on, on actually how they utilize the water, right? When they're, it's different, because you have, you have a family of five, a family of eight, or you have someone who lives by themselves, so, or maybe even a couple, so all the rates are actually different, right? So we do have control over that, over that, that variable rate. So just reach out to me if you have a question, I, I would love to entertain it. Moving on, we had the SS4A, which is a Safe Streets, Roads for All. I think we have a citizen out here in, with us tonight who actually was with us, and I believe some council members were there as well. That was at the Haverty Grace Community Center on February 15th, that was a fantastic working group, where you do like a round robin. Director of DPW was out there as well, EJ, show, show, you know, getting people, once you start getting people to talk, they really open up about where they live and the different things that they're concerned of, the different, different safety assets and things of that nature, and that's, I, I don't know about any, but it's my job to really focus in on the safety and protect the assets of Haverty Grace. So that, that was really good, some people kind of trickled in and trickled out, but they real, they provided some, some, excuse me, some valuable input. I, I did take off like the next day, my father's in the hospital back in, in Illinois, I just flew back in. I, I'm with you, Mr. Rebchinsky, I did fight the traffic as well, coming back up, wow, my hat's off to you for going down to Annapolis, thanks you, thanks for that. I actually cut through Baltimore and went a whole different way, it's crazy, right? But no, that's, it's no joke coming up there. At the 18th was the Water and Sewer Tour. EJ, I, I left you hanging on that one, I apologize, but I, like I said, had to fly home, but from what I understand, it was a fantastic tour, so, so I'm sure the scouts enjoyed that one. And I, I did thank, you mentioned a member who showed up, not on payroll, just volunteer service, so that's a testament to Haverty Grace and kind of what we're made of, the moral fiber that's instilled with, with all of us. So, and I think I'll close with that. I want to thank my police department, my, the EMT, my first responders, and the Subco Hunter Host Company. With that, I'll go ahead and close. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Booger. Good evening, Councilmember Jones.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Greetings, Council, Directors, and citizens at home. I'm just sharing a few things with you this evening. I attended the annual masquerade fundraiser and gala for the Haverty Grace Arts Collective. It was my first time, I enjoyed it a lot, I dressed up, I wore a purple wig that I also wore to the Mardi Gras Parade, so that was a lot of fun for me, and I think we had a great crowd for both of those events. I also was not able to attend the public work session that was on February 12th because I attended District 34 Night in Annapolis. That was great, saw a lot of colleagues, got to speak to some folks, and was really proud and honored to represent the City of Haverty Grace that night. In addition, I also attended the Route 40 Business Association Meet and Greet that happened on the 15th. It was a collaboration between the association, the Haverty Grace Chamber, Chamber of Commerce, and the Aberdeen Chamber of Commerce. I think this was one of the largest events they said they ever had, and it was great just seeing folks from Haverty Grace, from Aberdeen, and from other places in the county. So that was a really great night, and they had such a large event, and we did it at Great Wolf Lodge, so that was really a fun night. I also attended the I2, I'm America, a men's poetry event at the State Center, I think Dr. Ritchie mentioned that, that was a great event. Really, it could happen at any time, but it happened during Black History Month, and it was honoring black poets. So that was really just a great night, and again, great attendance, I think there were nine men who actually spoke, and we rarely see that anywhere, so it was really great seeing them give their, get their honor for being able to do that, and many of them hadn't done any public speaking like that before, so it was nice. Couple of things, this weekend was extremely busy for me in addition to the men's poetry. There was also International Disappear Fear Day, and there was a concert at the Star Center, it was a great concert, they received a proclamation from the city to honor International Disappear Fear Day. Also, on that 18th, I was invited by, received an invitation from the governor to attend a Black History Month celebration. The crowd was really diverse, and it was great meeting many new faces, some who are in politics and some who are not in politics, so that was great, and also trying to rush to and from Annapolis, but the, what, the traffic wasn't too bad. I want to lastly share with folks that at our last meeting, we had a presentation from Amtrak. I reached out to the community outreach representative, Denise Miller, to thank them, as I mentioned on the dais the last time we spoke, or the last time they were here, thank them for their consideration for historic designations. And as a result, Ms. Miller is going to come and present to the Historic Preservation Commission, the chair and I spoke about it recently, and think it's a good idea if she kind of, if she comes in and she shares what their plan is, and we have a discussion with the members of the commission. So that is, that's it for me, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmember Jones, and we're gonna go to Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, everyone. This weekend, I attended the Bay, Baya Conference, I did it for work, and I just want to let you know that there were hundreds of people there, and I was amazed by how many people from Haverty Grace that attended looking for jobs, working for, I was doing it for the United States Army, and it was just really interesting to see every time looking up, seeing somebody else from Haverty Grace there. So I want to thank you all for coming, it was a great experience. On the 21st, we will have the Tree Commission Meeting at 7 o'clock. On the 21st, we will have the Tree Commission Meeting at 7:00 at the Police Department. On the 26th, we will have Street and Traffic Safety. I believe that, too, is at the Police Department. We'll be going over Article 1 of the City Code, Chapter 190. And I also attended the Safe Streets for All, and I just want to let you all know, I thought it was a fantastic discussion. The people who are running that committee are extremely engaged, extremely insightful. They really do care about trying to solve some of the problems that we encounter, specifically, you know, what we call the crazy intersection. They had some wonderful ideas, and hopefully they can, you know, get us to a point where we at least have a plan for what it would look like if it was fixed, so then we can start moving after how to actually get it fixed in the long run. I also attended the tour of the wastewater plant. I took Valeria there, and I just want to, hands down to Steve. He did an absolutely exceptional job. He was so engaging with the scouts, so knowledgeable. This is a member of our workforce who was on another crew for DPW. Through leadership, thought that there would be an opportunity for him to do something different. He took advantage of the opportunity, has learned so much, has really immersed himself in the study of wastewater and all the rules and regulations and lab work that's responsible, that goes with it. And, you know, it's to see him blossom into another stage of his career is just amazing. And then added on to it, for him to donate his time so that he could educate others, not only about what their city does for them, but also what a career path potentially could be for them, is, was just absolutely amazing. And just, I can't stop gushing about him because he's just so amazing. And thank you to EJ for coming out and doing that for the scouts. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Boyer. Good evening, Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members, administration, citizens in the audience as well as at home. Spring is in the air. Look around. You will see tulips starting to blossom, as well as crocuses growing in people's grass. It's there. It's coming. Even though we've had some cold weather, hopes of spring are right around the corner. I'd like to extend an opportunity for you, to you, if you are interested in painting and like supporting veterans, we have a paint party at the American Legion this coming weekend, Sunday, February 25th, 2:00 to 4:30 PM. And it's an opportunity to work with other artists, and you have a teacher, and you can paint Van Gogh sunflowers. So that will also be an inspiration to bringing forward the spring, you know, the spring emotions that come forward with our seasonal changes. If interested, you can go to KDPaintParty.com and register yourself to get involved. I'd like to thank everyone that's been actively involved in our community, from our Director of Tourism. Thank you so much for setting up the ribbon cutting. I've been thinking about Big, Think Big, and it's nice that things are going forward. Looking forward to seeing their sign and everything as we've, as the council passed and approved that. So thank you for scheduling it in the evening, so those of us that work during the day can attend. I really appreciate that. EJ, thank you for setting up that tour. It was great to be a part of it. It was my second time touring, and it's great to see the city just continue to educate and, you know, be consistent with taking care of, you know, our city's waste and water treatment. So thank you very much, Mr. DeHordy. I really thank you so much for always updating me about the Marina Commission. It really helps me to, as the chair, to just connect to knowing and seeing and making it simple for the public to understand. So thank you very much. And speaking of the Marina Commission, we will have our next meeting, it's a little ways off, but April 10th, on a Wednesday, here in the council conference room at 4:30 PM. So those of you that are interested or want to just be a part of it, that's when we'll meet. And Chief Walters, thank you. I always wonder about numbers on people's houses, because sometimes there's things going on in our community and we need to report it, or, you know, we want to maybe go visit someone, and it's really hard to find numbers sometimes. So I think that's very important. I know they sell placards online that even look kind of historic, so it's kind of nice that there's things out there. I know where I grew up, we painted the curbs, but we don't do that here. So I think that there's opportunities to represent our numbers, but also to be safe when you're taking photos, to not put your address out there. So that's one thing to keep in mind as well. Well, council members, it's great to see a full dais, and I'm happy to be here to serve with all of you, and I just want to thank everyone for tuning in tonight. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shenegas. Appreciate the comments. And finally, comments from the council president.
Mr. Mayor, council, citizens, all. Jason, welcome back. You were missed, believe it or not. You actually were missed, because you're always the voice of reason, talking me down. I'm joking. No, you were missed. Went over twice to your house. Your lawn didn't need mowed, so you're good.
Oh, that's right. You're up for election this year.
That's right. So I got a couple things here. Number one, so again, Troop 965, I had several boys come here tonight, and it is always a pleasure to help the scouts, and this is like my 20th time giving a tour around the City Hall and helping them with their merit badges, and that's what I like about serving on councils. I do get to give them that unique perspective that is needed for several of their merit badges and for rank advancement, where they have to talk to an elected official, or to go to City Hall, or to find out about the inner workings of the city. So that always affords me the opportunity. But I do want to point out how well-behaved the boys were during the meeting, and how exceptional they are as scouts, and how well-led our troop is with wonderful adult leaders that really care about the boys. And I greatly appreciate that, as my son is also in that troop. And so we will have our spaghetti dinner for Troop 965 on March 9th from 47 at Level Fire Hall. I do have tickets, if anybody needs any, or you can just show up at the door and we'll let you in. So they're, I think they're $15 apiece for adults this year. So, and then gradient down for, depending on age. And then Troop 967 will have, that's the boy and girl troop down at the Methodist Church, so they'll have a pancake breakfast on April 27th from 8:00 to 10:30. So you can go down there, I think it's $8, all-you-can-eat pancakes. This weekend, I did, Saturday, went with the boys from 965, and we went to Avalanche Express up in York, and they went tubing, and it was great. And that was not the most memorable part of the day for the boys, because we went there to an all-you-can-eat pizza buffet. And if you've ever been in an all-you-can-eat pizza buffet with 18 teenagers, you know, let me just say that I didn't get a lot to eat. So mostly I kept on going back up. It's like, it's out again! So, but it was a good time. The boys are, like I said, very well-behaved, very well-led, and I couldn't be more proud. The boys and girls from 967, EJ, I want to thank you like everybody else has, gushed over you and Steve, and how well-involved and just how attentive the kids were, because they just, they looked like they had a great time. I know now that during hunting season, when the geese aren't flying in the field, flying in the skies or in my fields, they're probably at the water plant, hiding behind the fence, because there were so many of them, I couldn't believe it. And all the deer were over on the National Guard property. Ah, gosh. Yeah, I know. I need to talk to some people about that. Little League registration is still open. I gave the address last time. Just go on Facebook, look it up, but they do have kids. They have T-ball, softball, baseball, whatever your heart's content. And I'd like to end by mentioning the passing of a very dear friend, Brother Bill Mensah. Did have a good time with him about a week, two weeks ago. A bunch of friends and I went to go visit him, just to spend some time, brighten his day. I can't remember if he turned 92 or 94, but he's right around there. But we had a great time. His daughter Ellie has a restaurant that made us a bunch of crab dip, and we all brought food, and we had some drinks, just a good time and good conversation about his years as a Havity Grace resident, telling us about growing up here and hunting, and showing us some of the stuff that his father had when he was a kid here. He did pass this week, and I do want to have everybody keep an eye out, because traditionally at the Masonic Lodge, they do decorate the Lafayette statue with an apron, and they put one up with a black sash to Mark Brother Bill Mensah's passing, and it was promptly stolen. So if you see anybody out there with a Masonic apron that they shouldn't have, let me know. That, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Counsel, we're going to go to Item 19 this evening, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion to adjourn carries six here in the affirmative. The time is now 8:32, and we'll see everybody back here at the first meeting in March, March 4th. Have a good evening, everybody. Take care and be safe. Thank you.